I actually brought my own copy of these.
After I got up and went and got them.
Sorry, I thought it was something special or something else. My bad. All right, let's call this meeting to order at 5:01. This is a special board meeting on Monday, November 20th, covering the board meeting rules of order. First on the agenda is a civic reflection, pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. Let's start with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Thank you. Oh, did I skip that? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's not on here. Would you like to call roll call?
Mr. Fewans Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here. Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Jennifer's Eve, Ms. Wilson is even absent this evening.
All right, first up is the approval of the agenda. You'll see we've got one item, which is discussing the board meeting rules of order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda or changes?
I'll move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, anybody have a disclosure of a conflict of interest tonight? We're sort of all interested in the board meeting rules of order, so that's unlikely. Let's go to public statement then. There are folks in the audience who'd like to give us feedback, thoughts, statements concerning the agenda items today.
Pretty short agenda items, so I think I'll pass.
All right, hearing none, we'll move into new business, items for introduction, discussion, board meeting rules of order. It's been a while since we've been talking about this. Does anybody know explicitly where we left off?
We left off either at 6.4 or 7. I'm not quite sure which one, one or the other.
My last note, Mr. Supervisor, on 6.3.
Great. So it sounds like we've got some consensus there that we're on 6.4. So for the audience and anybody watching, we've been going through these rules over the course of several meetings, making suggestions that hopefully will come to a final product here soon. So we are on, it looks like page five in my book, which is conduct of meetings, public statements. Karen, I don't have the version that you had recommended. It's probably on this stack here, but is there anything on this item that you had recommended to the board to think about?
There was one in red here, "and shall not yield speaking time to another member of the public."
Uh, yes.
I actually have them both.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You got to that faster than I did.
I have sort of a question about that is, is... If you had a controversial item and you brought in 10 kids from eighth grade, could they all repeat the same subject? And how does that fit with what we want?
Yeah, I think we have to let folks repeat the same subjects. We can't control necessarily what they say.
But they can't yield their own time to someone else?
Yeah, I think that's actually a great example, right? Because if they all said, "We're all here to take our three minutes and we're going to yield all three minutes to Sherry," suddenly that person now has 30 minutes.
Right. And yet we've had it happen where somebody just gave one minute to somebody, which is not ridiculous. Anyway, it was a question that came up in my head.
Yeah, I think that's a good question.
If they only yielded part of their three, their total three minutes, is that an issue?
You mean and give it to somebody else?
Yeah. Which is what this says, "shall not yield speaking time to another member of the public." But it's still three minutes.
I don't think it was ever supposed to be like that, but somebody made a comment and then it started. Somebody else went ahead and spoke for two minutes and then gave it to somebody else the rest of her or his time.
Yeah, I think people see it on TV that congresspeople do that. I don't know that that was ever the intention here.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever did it here.
It's a relatively new happening.
A group can choose one person to get up and speak for them. Now would that be three minutes? That would be a decision, you know?
Yeah, just three minutes.
Yeah, okay.
I would be for scratching that out, not yield it, because there's still only a three-minute total. So if I wanted to speak for two minutes and give you the other minute, what's the difference?
Yeah, I just worry about the building time, right? Like if I get one from you and one from Jack, one from Karen, not that I think people shouldn't be able to speak longer, but just to keep it manageable.
Yeah, but we could bring in 10 kids and they could all, so it doesn't really fix that. Just a thought.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
At one time there was conversation about, and I know we do not want to limit in any way people's ability to talk, but there was times in the past, when I recall, whether it was somebody on the board or myself, or before I even got here, when things become repetitive and redundant, that we would say, "That's already been spoken to." And, you know, we don't need to use up a whole three minutes talking about something that's already been spoken to. So I don't know if that's something for consideration, or we're in a, we're in a time period where there's so much focused on our ability for free speech that that would be too limiting. So it's just a consideration, that's all.
Yeah, I wonder how that fits in with the law, the ability to limit folks.
What we have seen successfully utilized is an encouragement along the lines of what our trustee is suggesting. It's in terms of enforceability, not something I would suggest you sort of gavel and say, "Now, no more from you folks." But it can be an encouraging strategy to say, "Hey, we want to be respectful of everybody's time and still give the floor to those who have something else to add to the consideration." But, you know, to trustee Kellerman's point, there certainly is a balance between folks wanting to come in and be duplicative for the sake of driving a point home and leaving space for that. So in terms of the First Amendment and the Open Meetings Act, I would suggest encourage, but do not enforce such a, such a limit. And the issue of yielding in general is one that a lot of boards struggle with, because it can be a runaway train at some point, even if the, the opening intentions are solid and make good sense to us. And so the board has a lot of discretion there to choose what, what fits their needs best.
Thank you.
Seems like to leave it to discretionary rather than print it out and say, "We can't do it." Be, if it gets unreasonable, then you can say it's unreasonable at this point.
Then you're back to doing this again.
How so?
Well, we're talking about it now. Let's say six months from now, if it happens again, keeps happening, then we're, we're going to have to come back and, if we want to change, come back and have this meeting again.
Yeah, what's hard is they don't ask for permit, they don't give us the chance to be like, "Wait a minute, that's not in the rules." They sort of just do it, you know, for, I think, clear reasons. So it's hard to, it's harder to control in that way.
May I add an additional comment? And that would be that having this in your rules to say that the general default is no yielding does still allow the board to, in unique situations, if warranted, say, "We're going to waive that element," just like you have the option. So we could build something into these board rules that allow the board to override that rule, much like you do for your time limits on your meetings.
I like that. That gives us lots of flexibility then. And these are all suggestions at this point anyway, so should we put that one down as a suggestion and keep moving?
Yes.
Knowing that there's some work to be done. That brings us then to seven, on page five, the record of meetings. I don't see anything in your recommendations. Madam Superintendent?
I'm sorry, is how I got them all mixed up?
Yeah, I've got a stack of different versions here too.
Your next one is on eight.
Okay. You're correct, I don't have anything until number eight.
Or do we?
Anybody else have anything for item seven? 7.1, 7.2, 7.3? 7.4?
I do on 7.4. I believe this is, it should say publication of a synopsis. If you look back at 7.3, it talks about minutes. And then 7.4, I believe, is about the synopsis that we post in the newspaper. Yeah. And, and instead of it being within 10 days, I think we're only required to publish it within a month. I mean, we try to do it right before the next meeting, but...
So you would want to take out summary of the minutes and put synopsis of the meeting?
Yes, on publication of the synopsis.
And do we put it in our newspapers still?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I believe it should say publication of synopsis.
If there is one.
And within 10 days, you want that to read with them?
Published once a month is, is what it says.
What do you want it to say?
Published once a month.
Okay. So the synopsis, do you publish both meetings' synopses together once a month?
No, minutes come, the draft minutes comes to the next board meeting, and then the synopsis I put in the newspaper as soon as I can get it approved from the supervisor.
Got it. Okay.
If you want it to say 10 days...
But they have to be approved before you put the synopsis in?
Yes, and then it's, and the...
So the 10 days right now is the 10 days after the second meeting in which they have been approved?
So if the last meeting was two weeks ago, if I would have got with you and you approved everything, we would have had to have it in by like Thursday to be in the Sunday paper. So that goes over the 10 days just slightly.
It would have to to see it, to look at it after.
Yeah.
That's a problem, 30 days.
So it's actually two weeks plus 10 days.
Well, it doesn't say here.
It doesn't, it's...
No, I'm saying in practice, like that's how you're doing it.
I get it in there as soon as possible.
But after the board has approved the minutes?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So if we put a month down, that makes more sense? Because 10 days, the way it's written, isn't what happens, it can't happen, because we didn't approve it.
Correct.
But know what, if we make a ch, yeah, if we make a change, that we could still go in right away.
It'll still go in right away, yes.
So that's fine, I think make it a month, that makes sense. 10 days is not possible.
30 days?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's just what the statutory language says, so that's fine.
30 business days or calendar days?
It says one month, is what it says.
Okay. So should we just say monthly, the clerk shall be responsible?
Please.
I found these, thank you. Took me a second. All right, are we ready to go on number eight then? Number eight is about committee of the whole.
Can somebody define the difference to me of that wording?
If I recall, our attorney said, "That's not a thing." So maybe she could clarify.
It's not a thing.
It's not a thing, okay, then.
I may have used those words, honestly. So let me, let me back it out and say, committee of the whole is a concept that you will see in Roberts rules that recognizes that there may be a time when you want to meet and have more informal discussion amongst yourselves, more collaborative, rather than sort of on a structured process, motion, vote, et cetera. It appears to me from these rules, which I, I'm learning as we go as well, because I was not a part of these when they were originally drafted at any stage, but what appears to be true from the structure is that this is designed to sort of stand in the place of what your special meetings are, is structurally what it sounds like, but there is no such thing as a committee of the whole under the Open Meetings Act. And so the conversation I believe we have had over the past several months is, you could certainly have language that says, "When we have a special meeting, here's how we're going to run it." And you could still have language that says, "If we want to have a committee of the whole," you, you can do those things.
Does that bring in the audience? Does that have anything to do with this discussion?
Only if you, as a board, decide that's how you want it to go.
So it's all open to...
Correct. And, and typically, trustee Kellerman, I would suggest that those are more designed to be like town halls. We call that kind of the opportunity for the, the public to give their insight and maybe have some collaborative, cross-the-space conversation. But I think as we all can understand and appreciate, that also is, is also difficult for us to conduct business if that's what you're trying to do in a meeting. And so when it comes to the committee of the whole language, there's certainly a land where you could have a provision for it, but I would not want it to be, as counsel, I don't want it to be the default structure of how your special meetings run, because that's not something called for.
Okay.
Could we, at the beginning of a special meeting, suspend the rules? Which would allow, the, the history of this is we used to get like two tables and we'd put them out here during special meetings and they'd be like work sessions. It's still just the, it was still just the board, not the audience, but it was much more in, you know, you got like chairs and card tables and it was much more informal. Like something like this, we would do around that table and the budget, we would do around that table. And so rather than being like, "I'm calling on you, I'm calling on you," it was sort of just an open space to discuss. Because it was less business-oriented and more work-product oriented, but I, I see what you mean.
So that's your concept of the feeling of committee of the whole?
Yeah, but part of the challenge, Sherry, was then we put the cameras in.
And now we can't meet out here because people can't see and hear us.
So even this format, you know, makes it less likely that we're going to have this like
Okay.
generative meeting together. So that's part of why we don't do that anymore. So I wonder, is the recommendation from our counsel to strike number eight in its entirety? And then if we want a more free-flowing conversation at the beginning of a special meeting, to move to suspend the rules?
I think that's certainly fine. You could also identify in your, any of your regular or your special meeting components that you would like to have a work session element. I mean, you're, you're entitled at any time to go into that. We see folks do that when they're really struggling with what's the right answer on an ordinance strategy that they're trying to, to really wrestle with. Or making big decisions, as you all may recall from decisions about marijuana establishments, all those sorts of things where you want the free flow of exchange more rapidly than we might accommodate in a more formal setting. I think that it makes good sense to, to at least pare this down so it no longer functions as the default model for your special meetings.
Right. Why not strike eight altogether?
Yeah, I think that's probably the best answer.
Because there's no need for it, so let's get rid of words.
Is there consensus on that? Well, that makes it easy to move on to number nine. It looks like, and number nine is about exec, executive sessions. And I know one of the immediate changes is to change that to closed sessions. And I, I think we're all on the same page since executive sessions is not something that's in the law, but closed sessions are. So that's the concept of number nine. Thoughts on 9.1, 9.2, 9.3? I do see there's some recommendations from the superintendent. You want to walk us through those?
There are actually, I believe, more reasons than are listed here. And I'm getting the nod from legal counsel that I'm correct. I think in some way that having it written to indicate, and you can barely see it in the second line, that the township board shall hold closed sessions upon concurrence of a simple majority only for the purposes listed in the Michigan Open Meetings Act, closed sessions permissible purposes. Sorry, I had trouble with my P's there. But I think referring to the document would be more helpful than trying to make sure that this is always updated to reflect what's in the OMA.
Because ultimately, we have to listen to the OMA anyway.
Correct.
That makes sense to me. How do folks feel about that?
So you're just going to reference it then? Is that the decision? Is that the idea?
That would be the idea. And I try to, on the agenda, make sure that you know which purpose you're going into closed session under.
Yes.
So knowing that you would have only the permissible purposes, instead of having them listed in this document, we would refer to another document.
Very good. How do board members feel about, there's sort of two sections here. One section was you could go into it with a simple majority and another section said a two-thirds majority. If we scratched the entirety of those two, would you prefer that going into closed session require simple or two-thirds?
Simple.
Do we not have a choice about that?
There are certain elements for closed session purposes that require a two-thirds majority on a roll call vote. And then there are others which, which are, at least on the law, you could just do a simple majority. So your options are to mimic the law and have those two groups and, and basically refer to it. Or you could require a two-thirds majority vote for any closed session, because you can impose a more stringent requirement on yourself if you like.
Is there language that you might suggest? How we sort of defer to the Open Meetings Act to define when we have to do each type? We just did defer to it, but the, the structure of the sentence doesn't work.
I would be happy to present that to the board and with the culmination of all these notes we've been taking. And I'll give you some sample language that you can consider when you're ready to make decisions about changes.
Is that okay with folks? There's probably a real easy way to say, just like, "We're going to do OMA."
Correct.
Any thoughts on 9.3, minutes? You feel good about that one? All right, shall we jump into 10 then, motions and resolutions? I don't see any recommendations from the superintendent. Lizzie, you had given us some suggested language around some things. Was this one of them?
No.
All right.
No, we will...
But there is one hanging out that we haven't addressed yet, right?
That we will be bringing back in terms of a draft form, yes. We have prepared that and we'll, again, put that together. The, in consultation with the office of the superintendent, I have recommended, since I've been taking notes this whole time, that I would present to you kind of a, a summary of what folks' positions or suggestions have been, because in some places we had options. And then have that sample language, basically rule by rule, so that you can make those decisions as you move forward. And at that time, we would be presenting that. The concepts that I think you're referring to pertain to disorderly conduct questions as they may relate to either members of the public or concerns about board members and whether that we had a process in place to manage that.
Right.
And I, there was one other which now escapes me as well. But we do have those prepared and they would be incorporated in these materials. Again, all subject to board tinkering and wordsmithing as you deem appropriate.
Thank you. All right, folks feeling good about 10 then? I don't want to rush people. I know it takes some time to read these and let them sink in. All right, if there's no objections, shall we move to 11, voting? Any suggested changes there? One of the things I have found confusing in my time on the board is when board members should not vote, sort of conflicts of interest or other items like that, and how a board member gets out of voting for something. It's not just, you know, just say, "I have a conflict and you're opted out," right? You need to, the board needs to take action on that. I wonder if there's some language we should put into here. Obviously, it's the law, but I think none of us are going to probably stop the meeting and look through the law. But having them in our easy-to-read or easier-to-read rules of order might help us be reminded of when we can and should not vote.
I think we could, we could certainly do something along those lines. And you are correct, Mr. Supervisor, that simply stating, "I have a conflict," is not sufficient. We have to be very articulated about that. And then the board has to make a determination of whether that's, it's accepted as a legitimate lawful reason to not vote, because otherwise you all have a duty to vote on everything, as noted in your board rules. And there are some statutes that would allow you to override the conflict of interest and say, "You can still vote on that, we're comfortable with it." So we would be happy to put together some examples of, of what that might entail.
I would find that helpful. How do you all feel about that? I know when Paula was appointed supervisor and there was a vacancy in the trustee position, this would be, you know, like a decade ago, she had announced that she was not allowed to vote for the person who's sitting in her seat. And I checked with Lizzie and that, that's not a thing. So I have for a decade been thinking that's the law. So I think it's easy for that stuff to like exist and for us not to know what's real, what isn't real. So it might be helpful just to outline it here. Jack, did you have a question or comment?
No, I think it's kind of an answer, just through a little discussion here, so, thank you.
And then, are we cut, are we ready to go to 12? That's parliamentary authority. We have referred to this multiple times in the last several months.
I knew it was going to speak out.
It's like your intimidation tactics.
We were given that, we're going to use it. Did you get one of these, Jack?
No, I'd be happy to get one though.
I have an extra one, they gave me two for some reason.
Oh, very good.
Well, thank you for sharing. I didn't realize you'd be being...
I'll bring it to you.
I appreciate it.
I'll bring it to you.
That's not going to cover your Christmas present, though. That's an addition to the...
Sherry was taking the hint she was being given.
Maybe I'll get three.
Shall we really try and define whether the rules are, need to be relaxed by unanimous, unanimous consent or simple majority, or we're just going to do it for each time?
Yeah, I read that like three times to grasp what it was saying. So we can either just like all agree, yes, or we could take a vote. And if we take a vote, the simple majority wins.
That's what I'm trying to figure, is that the direction we're going in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed, I don't know, it's sort of like a casual way and a formal way, right? Like if we're all on the same page and we're like, "Yeah, we're, we're into it."
Okay.
But I, I wouldn't be opposed to like just picking, picking a pathway there.
That's fine, I just didn't know what people's preference were.
Leave it simple majority.
I, I was going to suggest that you, you simply pick a path, because then it can be noted in, if you're going to take a simple majority vote, for instance, it can be noted in your minutes. And then if there's ever a question about why weren't the rules followed in that situation, we can say, "Well, the board in that, in that element decided to, to forego the rules in that moment."
I like that. I would suggest then we take out unanimous consent. So then there would be a paper record of them vote to show that we actively did this. Does that sound okay with folks?
It's easier.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
The element of unanimous consent also arises in Board Rule 2.5 when we're talking about coming up against the timeline for the end of our meetings. And I think that's been a subject of conversation previously, whether we needed to have a vote to say, "Yes, we're going to continue this meeting past 9:00 PM," or if it could just be a nod of the heads around the table. The standing decision has been a nod of the heads around the table was sufficient because folks were wanting to attend to the ma- the table was sufficient because folks were wanting to attend to the matters at hand, but I raised that because we just talked about striking unanimous consent in another place.
Thank you for catching that. How do folks feel about that? We're sort of going back to page one.
Just leave it majority. Leave it back, both majority, the same.
Simple majority.
Makes sense to me.
Lizzie, I know there's been lots of questions in this section about where OMA fits in, where Roberts Rules fits in, where state law fits in. Do you think it would be helpful to outline that? I mean, is that something you could put into one or two sentences that might make sense?
I think we certainly could. I mean, I think it's first, the law, second, our rules, third, if none of that covers it, we're going with Roberts Rules, and we reserve the right to bounce out of that if we choose to do so. We could certainly tee that up a little bit differently so it reads more intuitively. I think that's a fair-
I think that would be helpful. I mean, I think you've said this to us at least five times, so maybe having it and writing in the rules will help it sink in, at least for me. Folks feel okay with that? Any other thoughts on parliamentary authority? All right, we're really cooking today. Number 13 on page eight, Amendment to the Board Rules and Adoption of Board Rules. So basically, you can't pass a board change, or board rules change in the same meeting. You have to wait a meeting. You feel good about that? All right, is there anything that's missing that you all would like to add that we haven't covered yet? I'm just reading some notes here that the superintendent has given us.
Mr. Supervisor, are you referring to the changes that I recommended for inclusion?
Yeah, that's, that paragraph under the 9.2.
Yes, yes.
Do you want to speak to those?
I'm happy to, if there's any expounding that needs to occur. I had began over the last couple of years, including the person assigned to an agenda item. There have been times when that person is bypassed and somebody else speaks to that, and I would like to be able to have that person be able to speak to the item before other thoughts and opinions are heard, as to the first bullet point.
Do you have a thought about where that should go?
My first inclination is with the agenda, how we outline the agenda. And maybe it's just a point, like 5.2 or 5.3 before we get into the order of business.
Okay, before we're laying out the actual order of actions?
Mm-hmm.
Folks feel comfortable about that? So it'd be like a 5.1 or a 5.2 before that, 5.3 and 5.4 in the current form lays out the agenda items? Any opposition to that? I'll just trust Lizzie's got that.
The second item that I had was that items for introduction and discussion could be moved to an action item by a simple majority of the board. I think we've encountered issues where we have put it on the agenda for introduction and discussion, and this board has felt ready to move on from that, move on with the decision, and I think this would help you do so.
We've done that for sure.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've done it at the will of the board. When the will of the board is to not do it, we say, "You can't do it," and when we want to do it, we say, "You can do it." So I think you're right. We probably need to clarify that.
A majority of the board to move it to, and something comes up that's emergent that we need to deal with, and that makes it legitimate not-
Correct.
But we need to make sure that it is, one person can't do it.
Right, agreed upon by a simple majority.
Majority, yeah.
Where might that be parked? I think it could be paired with some language about intent, like it's the intent of the board to have topics come for discussion first, to give board members in the audience, or board members in the public ample time to understand an issue before moving to a vote and give feedback, something like that, and then whatever part two could be, this, that could be changed by a simple majority of the board at the time. Do folks feel okay about that? Sort of like putting our culture that we operated under into the rules, so it's outlined rather than folklore. Lizzie, could you suggest a place to stick that?
Yes, I would-
I should be careful how I ask you that. A place to put that in the meeting, Board Rules, please. And you want to talk about your third one, Karen?
Sure, thank you. Information pertaining to an agenda item can be provided by the person assigned to the agenda item prior to a motion being made. Similarly, board members may ask questions or receive clarification on the item prior to a motion being made. I think this goes back to some confusion we were having about whether or not there could be discussion, questions, and answers before a motion was made. So I just wanted to write out and make it clear that you can indeed have that discussion and ask questions before the motion is made.
Yeah, I think under motions and resolutions, we could say something about that. Roberts Rules does say that, but again, it's helpful, since we have needed that so often, to have it in an easier-to-find place than Roberts Rules. So there can be a discussion before a motion, there can be a motion, and then discussion. Any debate on that? And I think, and maybe we talked about this, we've been talking about this for so long, at some point, we had talked about some sort of language around the purpose of a board meeting. Did we talk about that?
I think we did a little bit, and the intention of this, just to clarify for the public, was that there are so many times that the, that the board is criticized for not listening to the public, but I think sometimes the public fails to recognize that this is the only place that this board can do business and talk to each other. It doesn't mean that the public's input isn't valued, and there's an appropriate time and place for them to share that with the board, but this is your meeting to conduct business and make decisions. And so I felt it was necessary to try to capture that in a way that people understood both public input is valuable, but that this is the place, this is the time and place for you all to do business with each other.
Yeah, it would be nice to have some, again, intent language in there as well that board members should be engaging with the public and other, like, the board meeting shouldn't be the only place we're getting feedback and engaging with the community. I think we're not doing our jobs if twice a month, folks can reach us. Like, they should be able to call us and email us and, you know, do all the things to reach us. I think that's helpful, because what I don't want the public to hear is like, "We don't have a place at the board meeting." I think what I heard from you is, "They do have a place, but the function of a board meeting is to do the business. It's the time of business for the board." Is that fair?
Yes.
Lizzie?
Just looking back, it's been a while since we talked about this, but I do think that there was a generalized consensus earlier on to perhaps install that as like a number two. So right now, you have rule number one is authority and rule number two is meetings. The discussion at the time, at least as indicated in my notes, was that we would consider, I think Trustee Kellerman mentioned, and you supported at the time as trustee, including an intent, candidly, an intent section at number two to address that very issue. And I do have a note that there was, former supervisor Howe also had a note, but I'd have to dig that up because I just had a reference to her documents, so I'll have to pull that out separately. So we can certainly present that to the board when we're compiling all of the notes for your consideration.
All right, thank you. I didn't mean to take us back to something we had already discussed.
It was in July, according to my notes, so we're all excused from that.
Any other suggestions from the superintendent or any board members or council on things that we don't have in here that we should add in here?
One additional item beyond those that we've already talked about, and thank you to Attorney Shimansky for reminding me of this, who is here in the audience. He, we have had questions previously about the extent to which motions which have been voted upon and decided would then come back again. We have previously explained that Roberts Rules of Order does allow for those sorts of things to be repeated so long as an action hasn't already, you know, we haven't had to execute a contract and other sorts of things. There are a myriad of rules regarding reconsideration or rescission or just bringing up a motion because you didn't like the outcome, and so I would be happy to sort of compile some samples so that everybody's clear on what those are, and you all can decide whether that's something you want to put in writing or just be aware of. Those are two options, of course, before you.
Thank you.
I would recommend, I have been in situations where members of the public or committee members have asked for items to be on the agenda. I, in general, take my direction from this board, and certainly if one of you comes forward and asks for an item to be on the agenda, then that is usually honored, and then that can be hashed out here if there's disagreement on whether or not it should have been included, which is, which is your role. I think that there needs to be some indication of who business will be, recommendations of business who will be taken from, so that I have a clear understanding that if a committee member comes to me and says they want something on the agenda, if that's, in fact, that will be granted, or if that's a decision that needs to be made by this group.
There is a board action that was taken in like 2015.
Wow, you're reaching.
That said, if committees forwarded something to the board officially, how that should happen, I think that's probably been lost. It's not exactly what you're saying, but I think that would hit on it if committees as a whole are taking it versus rather than one committee member or a committee chair. And then there, the flip side of that, we also took action at that time that things we assigned to a committee, basically, it was like, what was happening is the board would assign something to a committee and no one told the committee, or the committee would have voted, "I'd like to recommend this to the board," and it never got to the board. It was unclear whose responsibility that was, and if I recall, we named the clerk as the person who was responsible for that. This was 2015. It was a long time ago. So I think we should resurrect that link, because technically, I don't think any board has overturned that. Those things exist, and I think especially for committees, this is my opinion, obviously, if the full committee isn't moving something to the board or asking us to put something on the agenda, I don't think, I don't think it's appropriate for a single committee member.
Okay.
That's not your answer to the public, though. Like, I think our committees have to act as an entity. How do folks feel?
But there's a board member on every-
I think the board member should be the one that asks, that is representing that committee.
Yeah.
Instead of the committee chairman or secretary.
There was a, there was a concern that when the board member didn't agree with the outcome on the committee, there's, sometimes was slow to get to the board, but I don't disagree with that in spirit. How do we all feel about members of the public asking for something to be on the agenda?
I think it's back to a part of a previous conversation that you had, in that they should feel comfortable enough to contact board members in between board meetings to get some conversation about that, rather than kind of dropping it as a hot potato right at the board meeting, I think. You know, having some previous conversation about whether it should be brought before the board by one of the board members.
I agree with that. And then the staff could prepare things to support the conversation, rather than, I know sometimes we start a conversation and we don't know what the exact problem is or what the solutions are, and that actually doesn't help the public in their request. And then I think the other piece of that, Karen, is that we've empowered you to put the first sort of go-round on the agenda, and if the public talks to you about something and you think it rises, like you can use your professional judgment to add it. You know, there could be, I'm sure there are very legitimate things that we don't know about that a member of the public brings up to you and you say, "That's a good one for the board," so there is some opportunity for them to work with you.
Okay.
And if they don't like your answer, then to Jack's point, come to a board member or start there. So there are some options for them.
Okay.
Do folks feel okay about that? Anything else?
You have other thoughts?
So next up is process. We have a lot of suggestions. Lizzie, do you have a proposed process? I heard you sort of say a bit of it to us beforehand. As I was driving here, I was trying to wrap my head around like, I don't want to take a million votes, like, "Do people like the period in that place or the period over there?" But I also don't want to make anybody feel like they've got to accept a document full of things they don't agree with.
So I have a couple of thoughts. One is that our office could provide a comprehensive list of all of the things that have been discussed, so that you could make, essentially go through that now, a limited more, you're not going to go through each board rule as it exists, it would just be those conversation points. Another strategy would be to break them up. So any, any changes regarding 5.1 or whatever the issue was would be presented. We maybe could even do it on general rule. So rule one has several subparts, but here's all the changes we talked about, and then you could handle that one at a time. I think that's probably the way I would lean, and my, my, my thought process for how we could proceed would be that we would provide you with a list of any commentary that was specifically noted or desired to be noted in these conversations, and any specific language changes that you had already decided amongst yourselves might work, or things that we were asked to prepare and present those to you accordingly.
I like that. I do worry that if I'm super married to like 1.2 and that's not the thing that gets changed, that I vote no on the whole document, and I think that's probably, I'd like, I think we all would probably like to have small wins if we can't have the big win, and I think the only way to do that is to go by chunk by chunk. How do folks feel about, like, keep it manageable, but then whether you like the document or not, you might still be able to get some of your changes in, in small part?
Exactly.
Because we're not all going to be able to have everything we want, because there's just so many proposed changes, but then at least it's a shared win. That's what I'm looking for, some wins for everyone.
Well, we've left most of it up to majority vote, and that fixes it most things.
Yeah. Okay, would you recommend we tackle that last part in another special meeting? Would you recommend we do that soon? How soon can you turn that around without charging us double for speedy turnaround?
That latter piece is the more complicated. I think a special meeting is the right place for those because it allows you to focus in on the one subject at hand, and I, I'm just sort of thinking about the logistics of, it feels like the end of the year is upon us. And I, I'm just sort of thinking about the logistics of, it feels like the end of the year is upon us. I would suggest that, can you give us a little bit of time to assess how long that's really going to take? Because, as I mentioned, we've been going through this since July, and I don't even think we've done the work to kind of consolidate because we wanted to have it as free-flowing as possible so that I could remember certain people saying certain things. So I can communicate with the superintendent about a proposed timeline and then come back to you with that.
Great. Does that sound good for folks? Hopefully, that, that could be sooner in '24, because eventually, we'll have a new board who might want to do their own board rules conversation.
Frankly, I like the idea of 2024, so that's fine with me.
All right, that sounds great. Does anyone feel okay about the process then? This feels like trajectory or momentum. All right, are we ready to move off topic and go to public statements to wrap up? All right, so let's move to public statement number two. In this public statement, it's still limited to three minutes. You can talk about anything. It doesn't have to be on the agenda. Anybody have comments about anything for this part? All right. Board member comments. Sherry, you want to start?
I'm good.
See you for the next meeting in five minutes. Jack?
Nothing.
I have nothing. Great.
I move re-adjourn this portion.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Support.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. For those just coming in, we have our regular meeting starting here at 6:00. There should be agendas up at the lectern. Am I saying, am I saying that?
They are up there.
Okay, yes.